Okay, it is 7:15. So, welcome everybody in person and online to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, August 24th. Again, we are in person at the Norton Media Center, which is 184 West Main Street. And members of the public can also join the meeting via Zoom, using the Zoom link available in the meeting agenda, or if you would like to join using the Zoom app. The meeting ID is 638-929-1060. There's also a dial-in number if you prefer to use just your phone on the meeting agenda. You can also view the meeting live on Norton Cable Access, Channel 15. And please feel free to email questions to the board ahead of the meeting, or even during the meeting, to Paul Di Giuseppe, the Town Planner, who is directly to my left, for incorporation into the discussion, for questions, if you aren't able to join the Zoom meeting or the in-person meeting. So, thank you everybody for joining. Kevin, just as a quick sound check here, are you hearing me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you fine, Tim. Thank you.
Perfect, great. So, just in terms of the top-line items here, we do not have any general planning board business or policies, bills or warrants to review or approval minutes quite yet. We did have one item on kind of general business, which was a review of the sole signature policy for bills, subdivision plans, and A&amp;Rs. This was something that we instituted early pandemic, probably in March of 2020, basically giving the Chair the sole signing authority, since we weren't meeting in person, to sign a piece of paper. I think that we're kind of probably ready to phase back from that, unless anybody has any further kind of thoughts in that direction from the board, or Paul, from your perspective, anything. Obviously, it's easy for me to come by and sign stuff, but try and get back to status previous policy so much.
Particularly on the bills, it allows us, it does expedite bill, payment of bills sooner than having to wait two weeks for the board to meet and then have it then go to accounting, which doesn't pay until the week after. We do have more flexibility when it's just the sole, when it's just you signing it. It can, it can help us pay a bill a week or two sooner.
Okay. And in terms of subdivisions and A&amp;Rs, I think that is an easy one to kind of phase back, so to speak. I think we actually have already physically signed an A&amp;R as a group, so that's one I don't think that we need to necessarily continue. Does anybody else have any other thoughts about that?
Paul, do we have to have like a majority of signatures? Like, so let's say, for example, like tonight, there's four of us here. Is four good enough, or does it need to be all seven of us?
Well, it might be that on a special permit, well, that's not a, unless that special permit's tied to a site plan, you might need five.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, you know, since we're still kind of hybrid, like, how we would, how it would help for that.
Again, sole source gives a lot more flexibility, so it's certainly easier if, if the Chair or the, the alternate is allowed to sign it after the board votes on it. But again, it, we would make it work. We could certainly, you know, if it's the board's choosing to go back to full signatures, then whoever's not here, we would manage to work it out so that they, we could go to them or to come to us.
Okay.
In any case, I'm fine continuing to sign stuff as long as it makes sense, but if anybody wants to suggest a change in one way or another, we could do it now, we can do it at a later date, but just making sure we have this discussion.
I think for me personally, Tim, I'd probably hold where we are until we can, like, we're all together in the room, because I feel like if we're not all together and like only four of us are here, we can't put the Mylar right back to the, you know, applicant's hand the night of. I think you make a good point about the bills. So, I mean, I personally would favor kind of staying the status quo, but I think it's good to discuss and welcome anybody else's opinion.
I agree with Julie.
Okay.
I would agree also, my only thing would be is that two of the people on here that agreed to not hear anymore.
Does that impact it at all, Paul?
No, it's a new commission, it's a new board, so that was just the will of the previous one.
Okay.
I mean, if you felt like you wanted to, you could, we could update that policy to include the new board.
Yeah. I know in previous discussions, Town Council has said there's always an expectation that local boards have turnover, so it's not, it is a, kind of a, the common sense of it does reflect, is reflected in how it works. Okay. If the general consensus is we're a little bit too early on that, that's fine. We can revisit it again down the road, but.
It makes it easier for Paul now, let's keep it easier on Paul.
Okay.
Don't, don't let the other people know that.
We're trying to give you every little bit we can, Paul.
Okay.
How about it, how about an administrative assistant?
I know, we're hoping, like, we're keeping our fingers crossed here.
Anyone notice anybody?
That is not on the agenda to receive your calls, so I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay. So, the next item up on the agenda, we have a modification to a special permit and site plan, which is Waste Management at 100 Hill Street. The applicant is looking to proceed with a determination to proceed with a minor modification to Special Permit and Site Plan, numbers 428 and 422. We have files in our Dropbox, and members from the applicant are here to run through that. So, if you want to just kind of step forward, the microphones are right here, so just kind of address us, and you should be picked up pretty well. We don't need to be right next to it.
Do we need to face the camera at all?
I don't think so. I think that.
We'll share that plan on the screen, too, so.
We're going to be sharing the plan digitally for everybody viewing the plan digital, virtually, but just to kind of allow you to give the narrative of what you're looking to do and go from there.
Okay. My name is Peter Richer. I'm the area engineer for Waste Management, and I was actually involved in the initial permitting for the site and development and.
Mike Funes, Waste Management, Construction Project Manager. Looking to add a 46 by 24-foot open classroom type structure on the property, for the purpose of giving health and safety briefings and what they call crew in and crew out meetings for, for the drivers in the morning. So, it's not going to be necessarily a full-time used office, it's going to be used to facilitate getting the crews in a good, secure structure to give them the briefings in the morning to get them out on the road, and then debriefing in the afternoon. Currently, what we have is that the crews are in a maintenance bay, and what we're trying to do is construct this, this structure so that we have, you know, with COVID and the rest, be able to space the individuals safely apart, give the briefing, and they get them on the road with the information they need. So, we really think that's going to help our facility. What it does do is, is we're not requesting a modification of the structure to increase the overall number of employees or the outside or parking spaces. I think what we were able to do is demonstrate that the spacing of the structure itself will occupy six existing parking spaces, but since the original permit back in 2013, the ASB, we've been able to increase the total number of parking spaces, so that even with this structure in place, taking up those six blade spaces, we are in a net positive for parking on the site since that last permit application. So, for example, there was, get my nose. For vehicles, we had 135 spaces originally in 2013. Now, with this structure in place, proposed structure will be 137, so it'll be two net parking spaces increase, and then for the truck parking, we'll have a net increase of 11 spaces.
From the, from the beginning.
From the beginning. And the, and the reason why the truck increases is because, you know, we had to build out of C&amp;G trucks on the property, and, you know, the goal was always to have more trucks as, as we, you know, as the facility, you know, grew into it, and that's why there's an increase of, of truck parking.
Okay. And just to, just to confirm, Paul, is it you or the applicant, we're, given the shifts in spaces, we're within what is required for current zoning based on the square footage of the building?
Yes, yes, they calculated it, and they're still well within it.
Yeah. And just to clarify, I mean, this is a, like Mike said, this is a classroom structure, it's not for offices, it, there's no bathrooms in it, it's going to be heated, cooled, it's going to have IT, so we have a TV, so when they do the corouts and they do safety training, it's all in place. There's no, there's not going to be desks, or it's going to be stand-up, go in, spend 10 or 15 minutes every morning for, because the crew size here, we have about a, you know, 120 or 30 employees, so they'll do it in phases.
Yeah, what's, how many people are allowed in the classroom at a time? What's the capacity?
I don't know yet, but I mean, I think we, we figured it based on six-foot spacing, so you're probably looking at, you know, I don't, maybe 15 to 20 people at a time.
So, you're going to rotate them through like.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
In like five shifts or something like that?
Exactly.
Okay.
They start out early in the morning, maybe, you know, 5 o'clock or something like that, and they're in and out, in and out, in and out, and based on the routes that they have.
Okay.
So, there's one, you know, there's an access in and an access out.
Okay.
Is the electrical hookup for heating, cooling like right there?
It is, yeah, there's a utility pole next to the.
Yeah, I think that's just patrol stuff planned, I should have thought of that word.
Do you want to show it? I mean, it's.
That's okay, I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, probably with 15 feet away.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from members of the board? I heard a message follow, I wasn't sure if that was through the Zoom chat or not. I just remember I hear the notification, I didn't see it pop up in, in orange, but just to check that.
You know, there's something in chat.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board, or members of the public that are Scott, I know you and Kevin are on the, the call here, I want to make sure I give you an opportunity to chat, even if you don't realize you're on mute one way or the other.
No, I'm fine with it, Tim, thank you.
Unless we have any further questions, we would look for action on the agenda item.
Motion to approve the modification of the special permit and site plan.
So, I think, okay, looking for a determination that is a minor modification.
Oh, that's what we have to do. Okay, motion to determine it is a minor modification on the special permit and site plan.
Okay. Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion on this, on this motion? Okay. Hearing none, I, I will go to a roll of the members for a vote, starting in person. Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Scott? Scott, you're on mute, so if you could just unmute and repeat your answer?
Yes.
Thank you. And Kevin?
Yeah.
Thank you, and I will vote yes. So, vote is to, again, determine this is a minor modification to move forward.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, we had a similar one a few months ago, 227 East Main, the same evening, you also did make the motion on the modification to approve, in that case, approve the special permit and the site plan.
Correct. So.
Chair.
I would, one second.
Okay.
So, kind of, we've determined minor modification. Is there anything further that you would like to have in place or finalize prior to us taking any further action on this?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
Unless we're missing something.
Making sure that you don't need to.
Just giving you the opportunity.
Don't need more eyes or cross another T, that's all.
No, no, we just want to make sure we have this approval so we can move forward with the building permit, and then, you know, make the purchase and get the trailer ordered and whatever else.
Understood.
I just want to make sure that I'm not missing anything.
Nope, you are not. I'm just giving you another opportunity in case you needed to do anything before we approved it.
No.
Okay.
Before I jump the gun, basically, is what Tim's saying.
Yes.
Okay, Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit and site plan, numbers 428 and 442.
Your motion to approve the modification?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go down the line once again. Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes. So, we've, would approve the modification, and Paul get the decision over to you, so you can continue to move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you both.
Good night.
Stay safe.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is Special Permit 11298 for 145 Plain Street. It's an application for a special permit for a duplex within residential 80 zoning. Members of the, here, okay.
Can you warm this up?
Anywhere in this kind of area, and that will allow the, the camera to get a look at it if you need to point anything out. As with the old application, we do have this all of it, the files you gave us available digitally. So, if anybody's viewing it. So, if you just want to kind of give an overview of the, of what you're looking to do here, and we'll go from there. And again, state, just state your name for the record.
Christian Bird, without back engineering. So, my client is proposing a duplex unit at the site currently shown, I believe it's Zero Plain Street. I've looked through a list of waivers requesting from the site plan regulations, trying to, pretty much got approved a duplex for the site. Went through the site plan regs, the rules and regs, trying to get, you know, trying to understand the waivers that were going to be needed from, and that's what you kind of see. So, I have a list of waivers that we're trying to get approval from, and approval for duplex.
And Paul, just to, to be clear, the specific relief that we're looking at for this special permit is the allowance of a duplex with the R80 zone. Is there anything further?
No, I believe that is, that is all.
Okay.
That, that is all.
Okay, so it's on Lot 2, right?
Yep.
Lot 1's going to remain as, as is?
Yep.
Okay.
Are there any kind of, what type of duplex are you looking to put on this site? Is that determined yet at this point?
Pretty much the land, what you see, I believe on, yeah, pretty much the land you see is what it is. I know the architectials in, in, or you got, pardon me? You read the architect, or did we send it to anybody?
I didn't.
Okay. So, we do have the architectials, and that's the footprint you see there. Just a single, single-story duplex unit with a full basement.
Okay.
Paul, if you could pull up that, that one. There we go.
Yep.
Okay. So, open up to members of the board, is there anything in terms of questions that we have for the applicant at this time?
Mr. Chair, this is Kevin, I just have a question for Paul. Does this require an A&amp;R as well as the special permit because of the RE zone, given that it's kind of off the road? Does it require the same fundage and access proof as an A&amp;R would require?
Sure. Kevin, this was actually an A&amp;R that was endorsed within the last year or two, so this is the new lot that was created through that A&amp;R, and I, I can pull that up.
Okay. So, a previous A&amp;R was, was approved from the same lot, all right?
Yes.
Yes, I'm putting it up right now.
I can see my name on it.
Okay, I've rushed it. I recall that, I may, they don't, they don't have that.
I don't see my name on it either, so.
Oh, your name, mine's on, I can see mine, Scott's.
Yeah, okay.
Orin's.
Yeah.
Joe's.
But this was Lot 2 that was created on this A&amp;R.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Are there any further questions from members of the board? Thank you, Paul, pulling up the utility plant, I think that shows it kind of what we're looking to do.
Yep.
And is it, is this a garage duplex, or is it?
Yep, so you'll see the garage's on either side of it.
And is there any additional parking available, or is it just kind of?
Just, I mean, if you go to, I think the previous page kind of just shows it, I mean, it's a wide enough driveway, but it doesn't have any additional like parking.
Okay.
We scan these all individually, so.
Okay.
Do you know what the name of that, what the name of that sheet is?
It's a grading plan.
Grading plan, okay, I've got it.
Yeah. So, I believe it's a 30-foot, I mean, I offset the driveway out 30 feet for the main driveway line.
Okay.
We have a conservation approval for the driveway entrance.
Whoever's in the, the near unit will have to make sure that they stay out of the way, otherwise the other unit will be backed up. About 30 feet should be pretty wide. Is there anything further from members of the board? Again, this is coming to us for relief for R80, for a duplex in an R80 zone, but there's no other relief that we're being asked for at this time. Any other questions or comments from any of the members of the public who were here this evening? Okay.
Are we good online?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we are also good online, we haven't heard, seen any chats come through, so.
Okay, Chair, I will make a motion to approve Special Permit 11298 for a duplex within residential 80 zoning.
And Paul, should we, should we be approving a special permit and a site plan, or just the?
Just, just a special permit.
Just a special permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none, I will go to the members for a vote. Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes as well. The special permit is approved. The, Paul, we're, get the, we'll get the decision pulled together and signed and over to you, and we'll continue to move forward from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
The final item on our agenda this evening, other than open discussion, is the continuation of our previous discussions around the master plan. So, obviously, we've gone over this page by page, quite literally. So, I know we, everybody had a whole bunch of comments, we have an updated PDF as of yesterday, correct, Paul, from SERPED?
Yeah, we just, just received it as of, yes, last night, so it, I did place it in Dropbox, I haven't had a chance to review it, but they, they took all the edits that you made during the last two meetings, plus some that, that I've made, and have made them. The only thing that's outstanding still is on the couple items that are in the action matrix, we're still trying to, trying to work with the, the parties that would be involved with implementing those, and just trying to determine what the start dates of those are. So, we're getting close to it, and some of the others, some of the others that don't have commencement dates, Wayne, as you pointed out in, in your review, a lot of them tie to other actions that do have dates with them, so I think the simple solution there is to reference those actions and just follow the timeframes from those other actions. But there are a handful of items that just are, we don't have dates, commencement dates that don't tie to other actions, so, but we're close, we'll get those done by next week.
Did the SERPED team have anything in relation to the comments that were sent by the board or by you, where they said that they didn't agree with our notes or changes or anything like that?
The only thing that I saw, I haven't reviewed it, and the person who's editing it is actually out of town, but still worked on it, was some of the data requests that you all had, wondering if they can, if we can update, like, he didn't mention specifically, but you might recall, like, the traffic collision map was from about four or five years ago. He made a comment that some of these maps might be difficult, or some of the maps or data might be difficult to obtain, the more current data. But we'll look into it still, he's out of town, but if your direction is still to go ahead and try to update, then, we have a little bit of money left in the contract. Not a whole lot, but, you know, we can certainly ask them to pursue that if, if that's, if that's what you all want to do.
Okay, got it. I think it was kind of, if there is no updated data available, then obviously, we can't change that fact, but I mean, if, if when we have a chance to review any of those specific notes, if there's.
Yeah.
This one probably is available, and we just need to find it and incorporate it versus this would need to be created from scratch from five different places.
Right.
That's obviously a very different discussion.
Yeah, and it would, there's only about, in their contract, about $1,500 left for the SERPED's contract, so.
That's not much.
To do original data collection that.
That is not going to, no, that is not going to be covered in $1,500.
But that was their only, the only comment I saw in the email from, from the person working on it. So, again, your edits were, were, were really on par, and it wasn't as though we were making wholesale changes on it, so.
Okay.
But I'll get that out to you all tomorrow, so you can look at it to make sure that it meets what you want, or if there's something new. I found a couple of things that came, that were, that were in, that none of us caught. I can't say what one of them was, but it made me laugh, and.
Okay.
We changed it, but I hope you did.
Okay, well, if you didn't, and it's in the document that we see, please point it out to us.
Oh.
And we'll.
Will do.
And obviously, we'll take the time to review it, since we, none of us have had the time to review the 100x-page document in the last 12 hours, so no. Okay, so, that's moving forward, and I think what we were looking to do today, based on our schedule, was whether we wanted to confirm that we wanted to submit this as a warrant article for the Fall Town Meeting, correct?
Correct.
So, does anybody have specific, I think, we've kind of talked about this issue a decent amount over the past few, few meetings, but does anybody want to say anything specific about submitting this to Town Meeting before I say anything? So, I'll go ahead then. I think that submitting it to Town Meeting is important, especially as just kind of a high-level document, kind of. Um, I think that submitting it to Town Meeting is important, especially as just kind of a high-level document, kind of giving everybody visibility as to what we've been working on, what we're looking to work on. Um, but again, presenting this with the context that this is not, these are not bylaw changes, these are not the hard copy changes that are even made to anything, um, but it's kind of guideline, guideposts and, um, directions of things that we're looking to evaluate. Um, not even everything in here is something that we definitely want to incorporate, especially some of the different strategies that we can look at. So I think that's the context where I would put, put it forward at Town Meeting. Um, and obviously as much as we can, make sure that we, um, share the link to the PDF, to the final PDF, um, early and often. Um, because obviously people are not going to be able to read a hundred and X-page document at Town Meeting. Um, so, does anyone else have any further thoughts in the, in that respect?
Paul, have you said you're gonna do another, like, public outreach meeting or another Zoom meeting or?
Yes.
Can we talk about that?
Yeah, I haven't said it yet, but it'll be, my goal is to have it before this comes back to you for your official review in, well, at least by your second meeting in September. Because we're proposing to bring this back, uh, I believe, I have it as September fourteenth and then September twenty-first will be the second, because then it goes to, uh, well, it's October twenty-fifth, so that would be a month before, so.
So that would be another potentially virtual event?
Or hybrid.
Or a hybrid event to discuss and review this with members of the public, uh, who haven't been involved in our last two or three public hearings.
Right.
Um, not public hearings, but board meetings.
Right.
Um, but, uh, does anybody else have any specific thoughts in terms of, um, voting to submit this as a warrant article for the Tu, Fall Town Meeting? Does anybody feel like that's not the right course of action or that the timing isn't right on this? Okay. So we'd be, uh, looking for some action on this agenda item, I guess, unless there's anything further that we want to discuss about it at this point.
Okay, I'll, I'll motion to submit the master plan as a article, a warrant article for the Fall Annual Town Meeting.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion and Wayne for the second. Um, is there any further discussion on the motion? Scott, Kevin, I'm gonna make sure that I point to you virtually here to make sure that you have the opportunity, because again, hybrid is weird.
It's only quarter of eight, you sure you don't want to read it?
Yeah, no. Okay. Uh, we could go through it page by page again.
Start with up.
I think that, uh, that might be better served for everybody to do on their own time. We've already done it once, so. No, but no further discussion on the motion. I will go to the members for a vote. Um, and again, we just need to tell the town manager that we're submitting it, correct? We don't need to have placeholder language yet, or do we, or?
This will allow us to put placeholder language in.
Okay. Okay.
Well, will we vote on language at a later date?
Yeah, you will, uh, as you always do, you will be voting to make a, uh, you will be making a recommendation to Town Meeting. So this plan will come back to you starting September fourteenth. Um, so if we could, you know, if we look back at the, the dates set, uh, we have two meetings in September, the fourteenth and the twenty-first, so potentially we could do those, take this up on those two dates with a, with your October fifth being the last meeting before the October twenty-fifth, that you could, uh, use that, uh, that date if need be. But as you know, we try to get these approved about a month before, get your recommendation about a month before, so we can avoid amendments and, or, or if something came up, that you make those changes, uh, early enough.
Okay.
So the, so this one is just to secure the warrant article? Because I know we're not publishing the whole plan in the warrant, right?
Correct.
So the language is gonna be kind of unique.
Right, it'll be more, I have to work with the town manager, but it'll, it, it will just be referencing the master plan itself, but not, we're not printing, because, again, this is not a bylaw, so it's just the plan.
Right, okay.
So we don't need to put all, all hundred and some pages in there. It's what they've told me so far.
Oh, God, please, I mean, there's no need for that.
Yeah, I think, um, and maybe at the, at the first September meeting, um, we can just have, I think I have some ideas around what makes sense in terms of rough language and in terms of a rough handout to have at Town Meeting, to give the appropriate context, and we can review that at the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think Scott.
But I agree, the, the language will be unique, because it will be an article that doesn't necessarily, that's voting to adopt something that, um, is warm and fuzzy and doesn't have any actual teeth.
Right, so how?
Yeah, that's hopefully will make sense like that, yeah, okay, I'm good.
Yeah, I think Scott's right, just thinking about how it's worded in the actual warrant, so that's good to him to give that some thought, that's good, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I don't think we have any further discussion on this, this motion, so again, I'll go to the members for a vote. Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes. So submit the master plan as a warrant article for the Fall Annual Town Meeting. Okay.
Well, thank you, this is wonderful.
And we have an applause from Christopher Keys.
Oh, Chris is giving us an applause.
Great.
And in person by key, yeah!
Okay. Um, Paul, did you have anything further that you wanted to share in terms of updates on staffing with the buil, in the building or otherwise?
Uh, I've got a couple things, quickly, and I know, you know, we're, we're gonna be leaving early, but, uh, I will say, coming up, we won't be so fortunate for the next few meetings, because in addition to the master plan, um, we have received the applications for Blue Star Phase Two. Uh, they've given us the definitive plan along with a site plan and special permit for, uh, two buildings. So, um, that'll be, uh, that's scheduled to be on your September fourteenth, uh, meeting. Uh, I have to get the notices out this week. Uh, we're also working, uh, we decided to, uh, ask, uh, for bids for peer review this time, uh, including Forsley Witten, who did the peer review for, uh, Phase One. Uh, for the, I've asked for the, uh, their bids to come in by Friday, uh, just because it's such a big and complicated project and it's just, it seems just more reasonable to ask, uh, you know, for, uh, a few. We, we reached out to five, oh, four groups, four engineering firms. I reached out to a fifth, not realizing they had done the MIPA work for ConDyne, and they said, "We can't do that as a conflict," so, but we have four groups, uh, hopefully we'll hear from all four and then we'll make a decision. So, um, it will probably be a challenge to get a peer review done for your first meeting, but that's not unusual considering the complexity of it.
Um, Paul, for our next meeting, are we scheduled to be in this space?
Yes. Uh, well, I want to work with them to go to the bigger space, because with Blue Star, I would expect that could attract a pretty large audience and that'll be much more accommodating.
That, that was the inference in my question.
Yes, I.
Will it be over there? We, we will see.
We'll be in the big room, we'll try.
Yeah. Which is the studio, where I am. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Peter.
It'll be in the, we're, we're hoping it'll be in the studio.
Yeah, that, that'll definitely be better in terms of allowing any members of the public who want to be here in person to be here.
Right, right, and it'll be hybrid as well.
Because even with, even with two small applications today, you could, it got a little bit cramped with seven or eight people.
Right.
So, um, yeah.
That's right, and, and when they really from Blue Star Christmas Park asked me to come to the groundbreaking in the Home Depot, groundbreaking in September, but that got caught off, so, but they're season by me to the Women's Center and the Home Depot soon.
Okay.
Nice.
I got to know some big people from the Blue Star.
Yeah.
Very cool, Peter, okay. Um, so Blue Star Phase Two is coming and we will expect a whole lot of things about that. Um, Paul, if you could just put those in a Dropbox early and tell people when they're in there, so that people can start reviewing them ahead of time as much as possible.
Sure.
Uh, obviously the peer review will add a lot of context that we cannot provide.
Right.
Um, and whether that is, when that is available, especially with the quick turnaround between our two September meetings, we'll see how that falls.
Right, right, but typically, I mean, if you have a week apart, typically.
We'll see.
Yeah, we, we don't know.
Yeah.
But I will tomorrow send you both a Dropbox and, uh, through Permanize.
Okay. Um, has everybody been able to log into Permanize? Any questions? Okay, Paul, is there anything else that you had on your?
No, no, that is it.
Uh, any update on hiring? Not yet, still looking?
Gonna re-advertise.
Okay.
And, uh, so we want to get the word out again on that and, uh, be more proactive and start reaching out to some of members of our business community as well. Uh, it's, it's full-time position, benefits, um, so we're, and you get to do planning and economic development, so.
And today, today I had lunch at home, today I had a late dinner, late lunch, early dinner at home, played it in, I went over to Sweet Shop to get myself a treat! And that's a way to support all the local mom and pop stores in the town of Norton. That's what a mayor should do, support the local shops.
Yeah, you are, you are definitely embodying that, that spirit, Peter.
Yes!
So a couple, just a couple of quick things too, related to economic development and really the master plan. The, the master plan, as you all pointed out at the last meeting, we should be looking to find funding sources. Fortunately, there is this funding, the, the funding source, we just call it ARPA, the American Recovery, uh, Plan. Uh, the town is getting its, its allocation, and so I'm working with the town manager to identify pro, uh, some projects that will help implement the plan through the ARPA funding, so it's federal funding, which, uh, we're also using it to implement the plan that we're working on for West, the West Main Street District, to help the businesses here through the Local Rapid Recovery Plan. So we're looking at activities such as marketing, uh, consulting services, uh, helping with web, you know, web redesigns and, uh, point-of-sales software, because some companies don't have it. Uh, we're also looking at working for, uh, working to help them through, uh, with business training activities. Uh, in fact, tomorrow I'm getting a survey out, back out to the businesses along West Main Street within the district, um, to get a sense from them, what sort of training would they need? So, uh, survey is, is basically done, we'll email it out, I'll mail it out, and then I'm gonna go door to door again and really just try to get a sense of what, what do the businesses need? Do they need training on, on business fundamentals, that they need it on business finances, marketing? Really want to get that sense of that, that will make its way into the, the Local Rapid Recovery Plan, and then that will inform how we use the money through the ARPA program.
Okay.
So a lot of good ideas that other people have come up with, we're, I'm just stealing a few and, uh.
You're borrowing a few.
I'm giving them credit.
You're, you're, you're using lessons learned? Paul, there's nothing wrong with that.
Right.
That's what all of us do in our job.
Exactly, but when you hear about a great idea, you use it.
Yeah.
So, um, and hopefully these, these will, the funding will hopefully be sufficient enough, not only to cover the businesses within the district that want it, but if somebody outside of it has a great opportunity, let them use it too.
Okay, yeah, and if you could, again, as it relates to marketing and website stuff, please feel free to involve me, because that's what I do every day, so. Just don't involve me too much, okay?
Right, I would only ask for ideas of what to do, but, yeah.
Um, okay.
So, yeah, we're really excited about this, and it's nice seeing these plans getting to the finish line and getting started for implementation.
Well, and I think, I think that's something to stress when we go to Town Meeting, Paul.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of federal dollars out there right now that have never been available before. So if we're smart and we think about these things that we put into the master plan, and we have identified times that we want to start it, we're, we're creating a roadmap to use those funds wisely to get to that end goal that we want to get to. So I think that that's a huge opportunity that has never really presented itself until now.
Right, right, exactly. So there's opportunities to use it across many different fields, well, a handful, health-related and so forth, but economic development was the other big one.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, I, I, you know, when this hit a year ago, you know, we were, I wasn't in, wasn't ready for it, um, but we've been working to improve that, and now this could be a great opportunity to, to, to take advantage of those resources available and proactively help businesses not only just recover, but we want them to really strengthen. And, you know, again, our hope too for the district is, you know, help the individual businesses, but hopefully attract more to that area and other investments and have it become a destination. But the first steps, we really, you know, are about getting those businesses, uh, to a better place.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I don't have anything else that I wanted to add today. I'll make sure that everybody else from the board has a chance, if they have anything else that they wanted to, to raise this evening. You see head shakes?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to adjourn? Hearing none. Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes. Thank you very much, everybody. Quick meeting this evening, and we will see everybody once again on September fourteenth.
Good night, everyone!